... They got phones.
They got phones.
They got phones.
They got phones, but they're crap.
Can they, can they get them at Walmart or I mean, they don't need like iPhones.
No, they're, they're buying the cheapest flip phone. Dana, Dana did this for me.
How much do you want to put into the budget?
Thousand.
Thousand. So if you did state contracts, twenty bucks a month for the, for the flip phones. Cause they're gonna be calling from dispatch. You can't do the browsing, browsing, you gotta do the twenty dollar lines, that's sixty bucks. That's how you probably do it. At the twenty line.
I originally thought they might be giving them a stipend on their own personal phones.
Yeah.
But, you know, some of them don't have the one phone with, you know.
We should reimburse that with a reimbursement for paying their own phone.
That, that's why I'm leaving the stipend for, for them to have it. I, I don't know, I think it, the phone was so bad with analytics. She used her personal phone.
What do y'all guys think?
Thanks.
If you did state contract, twenty bucks, seven hundred and twenty a year, three commissioners, twelve months, sixty bucks a month. With their mission.
We've only got three. They're all a week, twenty-four-seven, all a week. Then the next guy comes for a whole week, then the next guy, and then they rotate.
So every four week.
That is correct.
But if, but if one of them has to go out of town for something, one of them has to take twice that day or there for how many hours.
And most counties.
Somebody has to be there.
Most counties, that's a actual physical job. They did first and second sheet.
So how many weeks was that, that they were working out here?
Take two, two, three, four. So take one, three, four. So take one, three, four.
That they're twenty-four-seven, it's not just, I mean, it's, that's, that's the hard thing. I mean, I remember they'd get up at two o'clock in the morning, go down there, sign a warrant, and come back home, go pay, make two hundred dollars a week.
Three phones.
Right. So we gotta have a phone. I, I mean, I ain't got no dollars in the phone, I, or fighting more as far as our salary, but I think twenty thousand split by three is less than seven thousand dollars a year to be on call.
What was staying on that? You talking about on your phone?
I'm thinking it's twenty a month for the, cause you can do the ones that are Verizon, Verizon.
So six, seven, eight.
That's why they gotta have that twenty dollars line. That way you get unlimited phone calls. It's twenty or thirty.
I didn't spend it so long since we did that. So, you know, you look at like six hundred a month.
I mean, it's six hundred. Uh, anywhere between, if it's thirty, it's thousands, I mean.
Three hundred and seventy. There's a spike in the personal phones.
Two thousand seven hundred. I think it's six hundred and sixty.
About sixteen weeks.
We have no problem with that. I know. But I had to go, I had to work. I think he almost had to give a fuck. Uh, I talked to Eddie Braxton about it, and he said, he said, the end of his life, when they have one phone. So if he got a stipend, he was gonna be, it won't help him.
It's all, it's all.
Yeah.
What's the dollar?
Thousand.
Okay. Uh, and it was under equivalent, Diane?
We had it.
Communication.
Uh, communication?
On, on.
Where, where we got a thousand?
No, that's for the example.
Okay, so what, 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 where did we?
We had five hundred dollars in there for, uh, for that.
We had what, Diane?
I think we had five hundred in there for the dollars.
I see thirteen hundred in the communication.
Best to pay their, this Horizon.
Well, where did we get the five hundred phone? Is that what they gave us?
Yeah.
They're asking for it.
That's what they asked for.
Yeah, that's, that, that's, yeah. And you know how much they're making an hour? Two dollars and twenty cents. That's what they make.
Okay, so equivalent, we put back in five hundred dollars?
Where is the question?
Only ten.
Oh, okay.
So five hundred dollars.
Is that what you tell them?
Yes.
Yes, I say yes.
Yes, yes.
Five hundred. It's one good thing there was a.
Hey, could I like this?
Yes.
You have a phone, can you give us that? Would you give me what?
Verizon provides long-term purchase offers, but they're flip phones that they provide. It's unlimited calls, Verizon's Verizon, at no cost. But if you're calling anything other than Verizon, there's a minute to be to that. Or that's what I was mentioning on state contracts, you can pay the twenty or thirty dollars a month per line to get unlimited phone calls, whether it's Verizon, AT&amp;T, or Atlanta.
They can do that because it's only, they all call you.
A lot of times it's dispatch, the office, the office phone. So what we're saying is, you would, whatever you're gonna budget them on the phones, if they would reimburse the sheriff's department, we can get them some flip phones, or they can, or phones that they can call back and forth over.
Well, they would be he phones?
Yeah, they're four G. We just had to go through the transition, but we, like I said, it wouldn't be the free. Verizon, Verizon, there would be a cost, if you reimburse us the cost of that, thirty dollars a line. They'll be a wash, and that would have a problem.
It'd be cheap.
And you would have to pay five hundred for each phone.
And you think, well.
Just as long as we get reimbursed, cause then it'll put ourselves, we don't reimburse that. It's either twenty or thirty a line, I'd have to go back to local. But it'd be a whole lot cheaper if you go with Verizon. But I think we could get that done.
Yeah, cause see Sharon at the office, she's got a flip phone, and she was complaining the other day that.
I think I might come back to something and talk about her salary.
All right, so as far as the money to reimburse the sheriff's department, what dollar amount goes in what line?
Well, it's either gonna be, I don't remember if it's a thousand or eighty, it'll be thirty dollars per phone, per month.
You'll get all three for that.
Right, let's say eleven hundred bucks should be up the cover.
For all three phones in.
I mean, for the taxes on top of whatever that is, you know?
So eleven hundred dollars?
Eleven hundred bucks.
So then, so we brought, I also brought, uh. I tell you, it's about eleven fifty. This was.
Okay, that reminds me of our, our taxes.
Understand.
So if it's thirty bucks a month, it's a thousand a year.
Okay, but right now, we got a thousand for communication, and that's being replaced on what the sheriff is gonna put on the table, right? There is no charge other than that thirty dollars overage, if it ain't Verizon to the rise.
Raise it, take your five hundred down and raise it to a thousand, a thousand.
Or the five hundred, right, but this other thousand up here on the communication, I, I take off. But that ain't gonna be.
Yeah, eighty dollars.
You add eighty dollars.
Are you taking out of there?
Yeah.
Taking out here.
And to get the phone, to get, to get, to get the three phones and pay the bill, every year, they're saying it's about eleven hundred dollars. I'm with you. But you gotta add a hundred dollars for that, cause the judicial commissioner's line, sheriff's line, and it's gone. All right, so what's the total? Eleven hundred. Eleven hundred dollars. Okay, so it's eleven hundred dollars total. Right now, I'm sitting here at fifteen hundred dollars in their budget. Okay? So ahead, tell me, does the fifteen hundred stay, or they replace it when they put it off?
The fifteen hundred goes. You talking about the five hundred dollars that we, we added for the phone? What he's saying is, they're gonna get on the phones, and eleven hundred dollars for the service, so it comes out of that. As a judicial commissioner, drop it out, and, and, and give the sheriff eleven, eleven hundred dollars.
Drop, drop, drop. I'm all over it. It's like, yeah, you know, it's fifteen hundred dollars, somewhere else.
So you can leave it in there and reimburse it.
Well, see, that, that.
An old line guy.
Goes a different line now.
This is too simple, y'all. Look at three-on-seven, communication, a thousand dollars, and that's to pay their current bill, right? They're not gonna give a bill unless it goes over, and when it goes over, we're gonna reimburse the sheriff, sheriff that charged.
The easiest thing to do is, when they bring me the Verizon bill, I'll charge.
She'll run out of.
It's out their account, and they're out of their. They're still gonna get a charge.
This is what we're not trying to, to record.
I get that.
So we're gonna leave a thousand and eighty.
I would say, I, I'm glad it's.
Okay, uh, skip judicial measure, go to probation services. No, self-conditioning, you can't. Fifty-three, nine, ten.
I had no issue.
Uh, no, I have no questions. Uh, yeah, office supplies, uh, we went, uh, before Thursday, I had the two hundred bucks on office supplies. Had something to do with a printer or something involved in that, so we left the printer and took the rest now, since it was two twenty-two last year. So if y'all change that back and do some changes, let me know.
Did she go over or not?
Uh, I don't think anything went over, because like in her ears, except claims.
All claims?
Yeah, I remember y'all.
All right, so was that probation?
Yes.
I'm good.
Uh, going to eight, uh, second page, oh, to, uh, save, uh, fifty-three, nine, thirty.
Is that the contribution?
Uh, that's a tax. Like, like, like.
Oh, that's the litigation back.
Okay. Uh, okay, uh, program security grant, and, well, evidently, we got a blank over there, so I'm assuming that's correct, that's the most says over there.
No, just like.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I stop?
Yes.
I think I'm at the point where, number one, I'm starving. And I'm telling you about, birthday, and all this, do y'all care if we stop going into the sheriffs? Because that'll be one that we were gonna, we'll spend some time on. It's ten after nine, I got no words, but, you know, if I.
I was saying, um, Johnny, I just hear for nine-one-one, if y'all have any questions about nine-one-one.
And it's just a parent.
Well, we're judging, uh, nine-one-one, can you make that one?
I can make that one.
All right, so draw yourself a line, uh, e-anything on the save, that leave, uh, with the sheriff's on page nineteen, if that's.
That's where we're at.
Okay, draw a line there, and jump to.
One page.
Well, you'll see, it's, uh, it's over on page twenty-one, but you'll see for this year, there's nothing there, because based on them changing their status, whether they're being, maybe they can have a standard. Uh, it goes to a contribution as opposed to a, um, budget under the county. Okay, uh, nine-one-one on the notes is on page two, uh, fifty-four seventeen, is about two-thirds of the way down. Uh, there's a note there, and here on the contribution sheet, so you guys put your hands up, guys.
That's on the very back page.
Very back page. If anybody can find it, hold it up, grab it, do something.
Yes, very, very last page, thirty-eight. Yeah.
It's on Ronnie's.
On the notes.
On your notes.
It's on the note.
Oh, good deal. Those are the last page.
Use my page something.
Very, okay, okay, all right. Uh, very last page, uh, they had asked, uh, lawyers presented budget at two fourteen. Uh, I look back at the notes. Yeah, two fourteen even, two fourteen. And, uh, based on the, uh, to look back at the notes, based on, uh, the ninety, forty-nine thousand dollar extra payment that was made, uh, last year, or added to the budget last year. Uh, the TCRS, uh, contribution reduction, and the cost in health shirt, health insurance reduction, uh, that actually reduces down to one forty-six, seven, oh, eight, and that's where the number comes from on the contribution, uh, sheet. So, uh, I'll just start here, and then y'all can join the conversation, and, and we go from there. On the forty-nine thousand dollars, and I have to depend on Karen and Russell and Jim.
Commissioner Labor's here, we have to.
Okay, uh, but I mean, commissioners, they were here actually on the budget committee. Uh, when Roy came in and made the plea for this forty-nine thousand dollars, uh, I was on the budget committee, and I'm gonna tell you what, I remember, and Karen and Russell and Jim and Redmeat, or Antwood, whatever comics they want to make, okay? We was on the very last day of the budget committee, in fact, the budget always gets set in place, we were there, just there to tie it up, to ribbon around it. These are just already been made, numbers are already being, the thing was already cast. And Roy, Roy came in, and I'm gonna use the word, I don't think I'm overstate here, big man, he was in a pantybox. He had in his hand a letter he'd received from State nine-one-one, whatever that means, but saying, if I don't get forty-nine thousand dollars, they're gonna shut us down. I'll never forget it, because James Atkins, who is a member of the board, or was at that point in time, asked Roy, what do you mean? And Roy couldn't explain why it was needed, and what the urgency of it was. And James said, I don't know either, I'm on the board, and, and I don't know what, what's going on. But Roy was adamant, guys, if we don't get the money, they're shutting us down. You got three choices. Give us the money, and we can continue to operate, or we can go with another county to, to keep operations going, or you can go back the way it was, which basically was the sheriff. That was one of the three options the state gave. And that's what he told us. Russell, and Jim, and me, and other members of that budget committee sat there.
No, sure.
Going through the budget, taking the money away from other, uh, departments to come up with forty-nine thousand dollars.
No, sure.
And I was not there. I'm sorry?
Never been on, but, never wrestled.
Russell wasn't there?
Russell wasn't there.
Yeah, I apologize, Russell. I, I was thinking.
Excuse me, but Diane, wasn't there something that you left out of Roy's budget?
I was thinking there was a, when he turned it in, I, either something changed, and when he brought it back, and I think it was corrections that we got to make. I don't, I can't really remember how it happened, but.
And I don't remember the whole story either, but I remember that money, but it was something that he had told you, and you had forgotten to put it in, or something like that.
No, that's not what the meeting says, it's a name.
Well, I have to buy red men's.
Well, we red men's when I was in your office, what did it say?
I can't remember.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't, you made a mistake, it was to be had back, was it?
Just enough.
Well, I, 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 we red men's, we red and full men's and red, so I know what the meeting said. No, Diane, to answer the question, did it say she made a mistake, it was to be.
No, but.
Okay, so then. I, I, and Diane, you was in the room that night, so I, I assume you can remember as well. So I'll just say this. I'll be back and re-read again. I pulled, since then, and Roy shared with us since then, copies of that letter, and basically, our nine-one-one district has been declared a distressed district, because of their financial situation. And because they ran a naked balance more than three consecutive years, it's why the state said enough is enough. You gotta come up with some, some more money, or else these one, two, threes won't have taken place. So yes, the forty-nine thousand dollars was an emergency stock gap to keep the doors open. And yes, it was, as Roy explains, he was driven mainly from a standpoint of having to set aside an amount of monies in reserve for them, for state depreciating their equipment. You gotta put monies in reserves to replace this equipment, where this viable or not has no, no point. The state says, you got, based on your value of your equipment, you got to set aside this amount of dollars into reserve each year to be replacing down below. Hasn't been done at the level necessary. So if you look at it, and I can pull it out, and I brought it with me tonight, this thing is building, and building, and building, it's over a hundred-five thousand dollars now to date. If you look at your cash flow, and, and, and Roy said in the office, regret myself, when we was talking about something else, but he shared with us then, that, well, we're gonna, and I'm using the wrong word, cause he didn't say it, just my, my understanding of, you sort of see you from the county. We're gonna be pulled away from the county, so that we're not counting employees anymore. So more or less, we're doing our own thing. And as a result of that, that should help us reduce our costs. And the cost he was talking about from the cash flow was overtime being incurred. Because the current status prior to then required employees that helped more than one county job to be paid overtime based on a total hourly, instead of forty hours, forty hours, whatever. So that would help on the cash, but if you look at your audit report, it was done by your own independent auditor, like comedy's made in there, that there is a concern of your cash flow, not this depreciation reserve requirement, but that your cash flow is going down. And if you look on your nine-one-one, contribution back over here under revenue. Very bottom. On page eleven, uh, very bottom, contract services nine-one-one, page, oh, it's the big ten. About what?
Forty-eight, forty, uh, uh, forty, forty-eight, one hundred.
Yes. If you look at your contracted services, nine-one-one, that's what the state is giving back to the county, that they, you know, reflect, you look at the bills you receive, and nine-one-one fees are all. In seventeen eighteen, that figure was two hundred and fifty-one thousand seventeen dollars. If you look at eighteen nineteen, the year just passed, they reduced it down to two hundred and seven thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars.
And also.
Eight, eleven.
Eight, eleven. Right. There.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay. So the cash flow coming from outside sources, where it's a C E, nine-one-one, what the deal is, is going the wrong direction. So that hurts too.
Okay.
So with all that being said, simply this, I will say this, and I'm speaking only for running, I had to set up a budget committee last year, but this came down to forty-nine thousand dollars. And if I'm not remembering correctly, and Diane, you correct me, and Jim, you correct me, but I'll just be very blunt, nobody on that committee voted for forty-nine thousand dollars with ongoing bill current expenses accounted. It was not presented that way, it was not, not being voted that way. That was an emergency payment to save the day, and as I was presenting, and that was the impression the committee had when they voted that forty-nine. I don't think anybody dreamed in many years that we just raised the M O E by forty-nine thousand dollars. And if that was the case, we didn't have, we didn't have transparency on the table, cause if we did, we'd be told that before we voted, now did we?
I don't believe it's an emergency, but, I mean.
Well, that's what I showed you the letter. Have you sent the letter yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay, you wanna stick the letter and read it. Cause I think that's what the nine-one-one and Nashville made to.
Yeah. Emergency plan, Roy and, and, and Frank had made an agreement, maybe it just been verbal, that, uh, we wouldn't bother, you know, with the fifty thousand or forty-nine thousand, that, uh, we would match for three, four, three years.
Uh, and, and, and I'll say this, and, and I know Roy on his, he was kinda just to send us a pretty detailed email, and I've read it, watched it, uh, almost three times through. And you mentioned the state of the contract that we have, and the transparency of that contract, and what people committed to county C E nine-one-one. That contract was executed in August of twenty-nine, uh, twenty eighteen, between Mike and Andy Doe, and, and you. Commissioners correct, is that thing ever been identified that was in existence, and that thing was done?
Interlocal agreement is what it's called.
I'm sorry?
The interlocal agreement.
Yes, but the commissioners was never aware of it, that was never brought before the commission.
And never was.
So my question becomes, you know, what, why was that done in August of twenty eighteen, to lock us in for three years at the level the commission had no input on? Does that seem right to you?
I couldn't tell you that.
Well, just common sense, if you're a judge, if you're the commissioner, would that seem right to you? Does that county be committed to two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars with no input?
I can't believe that, that's what happens.
Well, we're county, it did happen. Commissioners, incommissioner, correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I can't remember that from that. I don't know about the two thousand and eighteen, but I think the agreement was actually happened before that.
Oh, he did, he goes back to two thousand and six, but I'm asking, why would he change, and rolled up and change in August of twenty eighteen, to commit us for three more years at two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, without commissioners' input?
If you remember, the guy that came to Bedford County told us that you have to, you have to pay this back.
All I know is this, that forty-nine thousand dollars was not given as a ongoing contribution by the budget committee, they make it into commissioners, and commissioners end up voting on, based on budget committee's recommendations. That's just a fact.
Okay, but can we take that out, legally?
Well, let's put it this way, if it, if it was done behind closed doors, as I would say, then it's never on the table from the commissioner's stand.
No, you may be right about that, approved it.
Well, approved it, no commissioners sat here and said that they approved it.
I mean, I'd have to dig back to like here. You'd have, I mean, you had a county executive sign it though.
Yeah, but county executive can't sign for two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars approved.
It's been a lot of money over there, it, no. And they hate to be brought from.
But it wasn't a two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars legal approved, the contractor don't think C Z and the commissioner approved it.
I can't imagine that you could ever do the contract anyway, unless it had, has the commissioner's approval, like an interlocal agreement.
I believe that the solid white sport was contract done without being brought to the table.
No, no, the commissioners voted on that, never had extensions at all, sending minutes.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's the forty-nine thousand dollars, so you might need to go back, as you need to do some homework on that, because I think, I think Roy can help on that point.
Can we table these?
Well, again, they need, they, they need to forward the story, they need to forward, forward the story in order to go back in the state.
Yeah, I'd like to have Roy here.
Absolutely. And, and, and I'll say this, I, I, I would question Roy if I knew that August twenty eighteen, inter, inter, whatever it is, existed, okay? You know it, otherwise, you can't ask what you don't know, stone's cold. When a guy asks for it, let's see what the deal is. Okay, oh, there's two other things though. One is the TCRS. The county employee, and, and, and I, and I thought, and you were county employee up until June, uh, July one this year, we took eight, we were, we as a county was attributed eight point five five of their salary towards their retirement plan. Okay? Started July one of twenty nineteen, we reduced it down to one point nine four, one point nine four.
But that's not true.
No, we're just paying five point five.
Uh, that is correct.
Well, it's like, TCRS made it, made y'all take this out of that, so you're, uh, it's been over a year ago, because we had to go back and pay that pay, what we want paying them while they were trying to y'all that worked at.
That, that, you, you're absolutely correct. In fact, you never got eight point five five, it was actually six point nine two. So the most we as a county contributed was six point nine two. And based on what information the state furnishes y'all, you could have went down to five point two one, but again, to leave a little footage, to five point five always could sit, uh, and they sent. My point is this, every other, of course, county department, they reduced it down to one point nine seven. Every other county department. Why does nine-one-one get to stay at five point five? For our. The point is this, every other, of, of county department, we reduce it down to one point nine seven, every other county department, why does nine one one get to stay there, five point five, for our required contribution?
Which are not paying.
It's the benefit, they're not paying.
Now, what's happening, pay it, turn on.
Karen, the money that we're giving is, is going to cover that expense, that's a fact.